Welcome to the city of, no, welcome to Pleasant Hill City Council meeting agenda, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which stands one nation under and
Thank you.
You may have noticed we have a special guest, Mayor Eli Fier is going to be chairing the meeting tonight, and I'll turn the gavel back to Mayor Eli.
Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Noack?
Here.
Rin?
Here.
Chess?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Mayor Eli?
Here.
All right, we allow a hybrid participation in our meetings. If you're not here in the chambers, you can participate by joining us on Zoom, www.zoom.us. You click on Join a Meeting and enter the meeting ID and passcode, which appears on the screen, eight one eight, eight one four two, eight seven five one. The passcode is zero zero four, one one two. Or you can do it the old-fashioned way and call us on the phone at six six nine, nine hundred, six eight, three, three. Mayor Eli, Agenda Item Number Four, please.
The City Council, this, oh, closed session report.
City Council met this evening at six fifteen in closed session regarding labor negotiations. We have nothing, we have nothing to report out at this time.
Presentation, acknowledgement of Eli Fier as honorary mayor for the day.
I wonder who that is. So this is Eli Fier. He's a sixth grader at Pleasant Hill Middle School, and I'll offer some other information about him and acknowledge him as we proceed with the program. But Mayor Eli, if you would take us to Agenda Item Five Point Two.
Award of appreciation to Keisha Hetrick for service on the Diversity Commission twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three.
Unfortunately, Keisha notified us that she was not feeling well and not able to attend the meeting in person. We hope she'd be joining us by Zoom, but I don't think she is. She is not. Anyway, I'd like to share a few comments regarding Keisha's service on the Diversity Commission the past couple of years. As you may recall, the Diversity Commission was established in August twenty twenty-one to expand upon our efforts to make Pleasant Hill a more welcoming and inclusive community, and Keisha was one of the first commissioners to be appointed. During her term, she assisted in creating the Diversity Commission's mission statement, its vision, and its logo. She played a huge role in developing Pleasant Hill's pledge for inclusion and was instrumental in beginning of the city's association with United Against Hate Week campaign. Keisha participated in the Diversity Commission's twenty twenty-two Community Service Day booth, collecting critical items for the Pleasant Hill's homeless population. And last but not least, she was a supporter and thought partner in the development and execution of Pleasant Hill's inaugural twenty twenty-two Juneteenth celebration. I have an award of appreciation plaque that we will FedEx to Keisha. If you're watching, Keisha. On behalf of the council, I would like to thank Keisha for her contribution to the city and all the residents of Pleasant Hill. That deserves applause. All right, Mayor Eli.
Five point three, introduction of Frida Chu and Rin. Reintroduction of Carson Sprout, Diversity Commissioners.
Well, good evening. As you may recall, Alan Vincent and I serve as the Interview and Nominating Subcommittee of the City Council, and we recently interviewed candidates to be considered for appointments to the Diversity Commission. This evening, I'm very pleased to introduce to you two of the candidates that were recommended by the committee and appointed by the City Council, the Diversity Commission, at its last meeting. I would invite Frida Chu to the podium. Come on down, Frida. Frida's a relatively new resident in Pleasant Hill, but she has the experience, background, and interest that she could have been placed on a number of commissions, including the Education or Architectural Review Commission, but she chose the Diversity Commission. She's passionate about diversity. She's an immigrant from Macau, and she's a new mother of a child of mixed race, making her a perfect candidate and member of our Diversity Commission. Her full-time job is a project manager for a construction company, and she's been involved in our company's committee to help organize events and meetings to promote the importance of equal and fair access to opportunities. She expressed interest in helping Pleasant Hill expand its efforts to make our city more inclusive for all races, genders, and ages in a fun and engaging way. Frida, I welcome and thank you and invite you to say a few words.
Thank you for having me here today and very excited about this opportunity to to serve the city and also help with inclusion for the residents of Pleasant Hill. And thank you again for this great opportunity and looking forward for what we can do in the next year or two.
Thank you, Frida, for taking the time out of your busy life. Appreciate all your efforts on our behalf.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to invite Carson Sprout to the podium. While he's walking down, this is a reappointment. Carson was appointed to the Diversity Commission when it was formed in August of twenty twenty-one. He was reappointed for a four-year term by the City Council at its August second meeting. You'll have to bear with me, Carson, as we laud you here. During Carson's term, you have seen him at council meetings, receiving proclamations, recognizing a variety of the cultures present in Pleasant Hill, and acknowledging the heritage and contributions our diverse population brings. Carson is now serving as the Commission's Chair and has participated in the founding and establishment of activities mentioned earlier, including the Juneteenth Celebration, United Against Hate Week, and Articles in the Outlook Newsletter. In his day job, Carson is an attorney for the University of California, working to maintain integrity and community at schools in the UC system for all those who participate in it as employees and students. In addition to his volunteer efforts with the Diversity Commission, you may also see Carson out in the community as he coaches soccer, football, and rugby. Thank you, Carson, for your continued dedication to the city. Appreciate it. Please.
Mayor Flaherty, Mayor Fier, council members, it's been a pleasure to serve. I'm looking forward to continuing the work we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Carson.
Five point four, Civil Civic Action Commission's update on Summer Concert Series.
Chair Barbara Sbarro, are you here tonight? Welcome, Barbara.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Flaherty, Mayor Eli, and esteemed council. On behalf of the Civic Action Commission, we would like to thank you for your continuing support of our community events, most recently, Community Service Day and the Summer Concert Series. We also thank Jeff Gillette for all that he does to bring success to these endeavors. I will now turn this presentation over to Commissioner Anthony Garcia. Commissioner Garcia leads a new Civic Action Commission Subcommittee. It's titled the Experience Committee. This committee definitely lived up to its name by adding new and entertaining experiences to the twenty twenty-three concert series. Here is a recap from Commissioner Garcia.
Welcome, Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Good evening, Mayor Flaherty, Mayor Eli, and esteemed council. As a proud commissioner on the Pleasant Hill Civic Action Commission, it's my honor to provide a recap of the twenty twenty-three Summer Concert Series, a celebration of music, community, and unity. And what a great season. Thanks in all to the support of the Civic, excuse me, the City Council, our fantastic sponsors, and the attendance of our fun-loving residents and neighbors to the Pleasant Hill community. Despite early challenges with the chilly start to the summer season, we saw a consistent attendance matching last year's numbers for average concert attendance, with special nights like Family Fun Night attracting over an estimated six hundred and fifty enthusiastic attendee and kids for those events. While the numbers speak for themselves, it's the feedback from our community that generally measures our success. We have actively sought feedback to continually improve with forty-nine survey responses and hundreds of points of feedback from last year, and we're seeking to increase those numbers this year with the survey that's open today and will continually to promote that. And from those, from that feedback from last year, we introduced significant enhancements this year, including the Family Fun Zone, which is especially fun for mayors who love bounce houses. Note, Eli. But we also included a wider range of musical genres, and we even intertwined community spirit in fun ways like the t-shirt color selection for Community Service Day that we did live on stage. Our commitment to safety was also solidified with the drafting of an enhanced safety plan. We received some initial guidance from Pleasant Hill PD for that. And the heartbeat of the Summer Concert Series is not just the music, but the community, and we want to extend our deep gratitude to our sponsors, notably our headline sponsor, Stokely Properties. A special thanks to the City Council for their unwavering support and regular presence, which did not go unnoticed and really appreciated the enjoyment and time to be there. We're looking for, we're also exploring collaborations with other commissions to further expand the experience and enhance the concert attendance further. But for example, we're bringing back the Family Fun Zone, and this is a prime opportunity. We can start to collaborate with our Education Commission for further volunteer and enhancement to that night as well. So looking forward, the twenty twenty-four season beckons with even more excitement as we invite bands to apply early, starting December first, and encourage more community involvement through the survey. And of course, attendance, we're never short of ideas to continually improve and ensure the concert experience remains a must-not-miss, a must-not-miss part of Pleasant Hill summers. So on behalf of the CAC, thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to another memorable season next year, and I'll yield time for comments or questions.
Thank you, Anthony. Appreciate the variety of music and genres that were presented this past year and look forward to more. Sure, some other council members may have some comments.
Yeah, just want to thank the Civic Action Commission. This is the highlight of summer. You know, my husband and I, with our roll-up table and chairs and everything, come down all the time, and just to see the attendance and the great participation by Pleasant Hill. It's one of those things that makes Pleasant Hill that small-town feel that we love, so really appreciate all your efforts.
My wife and I try to attend as many of those concerts as possible. We even schedule a time out of town around that. To me, the biggest one was the big jangle at the end of the year. I think that was packed, and I was trying to walk around. It was very hard to get around. It was a huge crowd. So thank you very much to you and all the commission members.
I just wanted to echo sentiments, like kudos to the Civic Action Commission, and then just also as a local business owner, it's a great opportunity to get your business out there and be part of the community. So as a sponsor, anyone's interested next year, I'm happy to talk with them and help support the program, so.
That's my colleague here, they've said it very well. Thank you again for continuing to put this series on and look forward to next year already. Great. Thank you, Anthony, and thank you, Barbara, for your chairperson. Back to you, Mayor Eli.
City Manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor Eli and Mayor Flaherty and council members. Good evening. Had a couple of announcements to share with you this evening. First off, working in partnership with the downtown merchants, the city is continuing to prepare for Light Up the Night, which is an event scheduled for Saturday, December second, from four thirty to seven thirty PM here downtown on Crescent Drive. There will be music, dancing, train rides, lightning of the Christmas tree, visits with Santa, activity booths with city commissioners, hot chocolate, and more. So for more information, please visit the city's website. We hope to see you all there. If you have not had a chance to try out the great food at Off the Grid on Wednesday nights here at City Hall, you only have two weeks left. Next Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, will be the season's end for Off the Grid. They will then take the winter off, off the winter months, and we'll be back with more great food next spring. An update from the Commission on Aging. They hosted an intergenerational ice cream maker space at the Tinkers and Thinkers Innovation Fair, September sixteenth. There were over three thousand folks in attendance at the fair. Over seven hundred participated in the three ice cream-related activities in the maker's space. I think it's safe to say the mission for the senior citizens and youth to engage with each other was a success. And again, by all accounts, that was, a lot of fun was had, and it was a great success. Lastly, I want to highlight that this month, for those of you who may not know, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the month of October. Ten years ago, in October of twenty thirteen, the Pink Patch Project began when the Seal Beach Police Department in Southern California donned pink patches on their uniforms during the month of October with the goal of bringing attention to the fight against breast cancer and to support breast cancer research organizations in their efforts to treat and cure this disease. I'm happy to report that the Pleasant Hill Police Department is proud and grateful to participate this year in this initiative as they wear the pink patch, as donned by Captain Matt Christic on each shoulder. Thank you, sir. To show our support for the many in our community and our communities across the nation who have been affected by this disease. Our Pleasant Hill officers stand in solidarity with those in the fight to raise awareness about this lifesaving benefits of early detection, intervention, and treatment. And on that note, I conclude and would yield to any questions.
Anyone have any questions of City Manager Bindernagle? None? We'll move on. Mayor Eli?
Council announcements and reports. Reports from council members on meetings or conferences attended by, attended at city expense. Khan?
I know a number of us attended the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference hosted by the city of Pleasant Hill. Want to thank our staff and our city manager for doing all the hard work that made us look good. We hosted the nineteen cities in Contra Costa County at the Country Club for an evening where we received a presentation from BART on its forward-looking approach, and we didn't talk about its finances. We just talked about its service and its aspirational goals. I don't know if anyone else was at the mayor's conference that wants to speak out?
No, I'll just add, you know, most everybody's aware of BART being on a fiscal cliff. It's in the news quite a bit. They continue to make some changes to try to increase the ridership, and there'll be new gates going in over the next two years at all the BART stations, which are full-length gates that will reduce the amount of fare hopping and gate jumping. They've also changed the train schedule to make them more frequent, so more reliable. They shortened the trains down to eight, but they're running every ten minutes, and they are making some significant efforts to, for cleanliness. So they are going to continue to work on this. They know there's a lot of pressure on them to bring ridership back, because I think they're only at forty percent pre-pandemic levels. And they used to provide about sixty or seventy percent of their own funding, but at forty percent, that's why they're facing a fiscal cliff. So I'm sure everybody will hear more about that in the next two years, but that's a little more detail.
Any other council members? Vice Mayor Rin?
I just wanted to compliment the mayor for hosting and graciousness, and it was good to see some of our foam room mayors, acknowledge them, Chuck Escobar, Dave Grant, John Hannecack. Ken Carlson, did I miss anybody else who was there that night? I think, I think I got them all, but I just wanted to recognize them for still participating and supporting our city.
Former treasurer and city clerk as well.
Yep.
All right.
Other meetings attended at city expense.
Anyone else have any other meetings?
I do.
Councilmember Vincent?
I attended the Diablo Valley Tech Institute at DVC a few weeks ago. Ken Carlson was one of the speakers there. It was interesting because it's a group trying to bring tech companies into the Diablo Valley, and one of the conversations was about the fact that they're not so interested now in college degrees, but people having skills. And I think one of the programs at DVC is that Tesla provided equipment to train people to work on Tesla. So the college degrees are becoming less important for a lot of these companies, but there are other ways to get the appropriate skills and get jobs. So I found it interesting.
Thank you.
Do you want to let the rest of us go?
Oh, we were gonna, I assume it's not meetings, you just have announcements?
Yeah, just.
So I was gonna let Mayor Eli call the announcements.
Okay.
Mayor Eli?
Announcements from council members.
Councilmember Noack?
Thank you. So I attended the Pleasant Hill Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament on Monday. It's a little chilly day, but it was, it was a nice event. And then they had a mixer as well on Thursday, and Ken Carlson, our county supervisor, his new offices are here in Pleasant Hill across from Jack's, and he had an open house celebrating, celebrating that. I did have one other announcement just for people that were unaware. There's been, you know, we've gotten a lot of conversation about speeding and traffic issues, and the governor did sign AB six forty-five in the last week, and this allows for a pilot to be started in San Francisco, San Jose, and Oakland for speed safety cameras. And so that will be a pilot. We're hoping that that goes well so that that can be spread further in the state to reduce the amount of speeding that's occurring. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Thank you. Any other announcements from council members?
I joined Councilmember Noack in the Pleasant Hill Chamber Golf Tournament as well.
Nobody's talking about their score, so I guess it was not impressive.
I won the closest to the hole.
Without going in?
Without going in.
I was, I was trying to be humble, but.
Oh.
His team won.
No. Thank you. Anybody else have any other announcements they want to share? All right, then we'll turn back to Mayor Eli and we'll do Agenda Item Number Eight.
Public comment. The public is welcome at this time to address the city council on items on the consent calendar or other items not listed on the agenda within the council's jurisdiction. There will be an opportunity to comment on other agenda items at the time they are discussed.
Thank you, Mayor Eli. But before we open public comment for this evening's meeting, on behalf of the council, I do like, want to address an issue that several public agencies around California have encountered recently. Anonymous individuals taking advantage of the public comment portion of a meeting to engage in disruptive, irrelevant, or illegal comments. They have launched these attacks at numerous public agency meetings right here in Contra Costa County and all around the state over the past few weeks. Let me be clear, the city of Pleasant Hill does not condone hate speech in any form. It has no place here. Equity and inclusion are part of our core values. We continually strive to make life better for all members of our community and create an atmosphere where everyone feels a sense of safety and belonging. With that in mind, I will interrupt any comments that are disruptive to the orderly conduct of our meeting in violation of our policies or the law, incites violence, or are not under the council's subject matter jurisdiction, and not relevant to the item being discussed. I would issue a warning, but continued disruption of the meeting will result in a disconnection of the ability to transmit sound, and if in person, may result in removal from the room. Do apologize for any inconvenience or anxiety caused by this announcement, but we believe it's imperative to take these steps to preserve remote participants' opportunity to speak while maintaining a safe environment that is in conformance with the law and our policies and allows us to conduct our meeting without disruption. We do ask that anyone who wishes to speak does so with civility, respect, and kindness for others. Thank you, and I now do invite you to provide your comments. Do we have any speaker cards for general public comment? I do have two cards, but I believe it's for an agenda item relating to the housing element. But if there's anyone else who has general public comment? Welcome. Don't go. Is this, is this for public comment? Not on the agenda item?
Not on the agenda item.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, council members, and thank you, Mayor Eli. You are much less nervous in public speaking than I am, so congratulations. So I'm, my name is Alan Baday. I'm a resident of Pleasant Hill and a founding member of a group called Friends of Pleasant Hill Creeks. And I wanted to take this moment to also thank the Civic Action Commission, who sponsored a creek cleanup over at Ellenwood for the second time, and it went fabulously. We've, we only filled half of a twenty-yard dumpster this time. We filled a twenty-yard dumpster last year. So, and I want to thank Derek and Jeff, in particular, and the maintenance guys, who are awesome with their truck that helped us haul all the trash up the dumpster. Friends of Pleasant Hill Creeks is a kind of a, it's a, we're a nonprofit organization, a project of a sponsoring nonprofit. But we're also a member of the Walnut Creek Watershed Council, and in that way, we represent Pleasant Hill in a larger organization that is for the whole watershed. Every sub watershed has a creek group representative on this council. One of the things that we have done in Friends of Pleasant Hill Creek is wildlife monitoring, bird surveys, otters and other species that we've, we've discovered on our creeks, fall, full-grown, full-fall Chinook salmons have been documented. We, the creeks are very important. They serve multipurpose functions of green space enjoyment and support wildlife and educational opportunities and more. During the general plan process, it was very clear that the public highly values our creeks and wishes them to remain in a natural state. The city is blessed with a number of creekside locations. Some of them are undeveloped and present a unique opportunity. Others are within local parks. Within the Walnut Creek Watershed Council, we're led by a gentleman named Bob Simmons, who some of you may know as a former mayor of Walnut Creek. And we're engaged right now in a watershed planning process, restoration process. And one of the reasons that we are actively engaged in this is that there's a large pot of mitigation money that occasionally comes up when large projects get engaged in our area. And I'm hoping that Wendy's comments may be able to extend mine a little bit. So for instance, when Buchanan Airport was expanded, the Regional Water Quality Control Board required them to reboot, to restore wetlands in another area. They don't want that money to go outside of our watershed if it doesn't have to. They did not have a list of available sites for mitigation funding. We want that to change. We want some of this mitigation money to come to Pleasant Hill. So we are actively involved in that, forming a list as requested by the water board. There's an example of a major restoration project happening at Newell Park in Concord. They're restoring the hydrologic capacity of that creek in Newell Park. And for ten years, it will be monitored. They've removed natives. I'm non-invasive species. They're planting natives, and there'll be great public benefit from that. So we're trying to work also with Park District to help bring some of these projects. So then the other thing that we wanted to let the council know about is that the Walnut Creek Watershed Council is, has member organizations from, like the Contra Costa Watership, let's see, Contra Costa Resource Conservation District, as well as the FCD, the Flood as well as the FCD, the Flood Control District, are member agencies in the, on the Creek Watershed Council. There's a major symposium that's given every four years. It's at the Community Center on October 26th, which is a Thursday. It's an all-day event. Ken Carlson is giving the opening remarks. And I would like to invite anyone, members of the public as well. I'll have a sheet with a QR code that anyone can scan if they are interested in the conference. And then we have our long last annual report for the Walnut Creek Watershed Council. The last one was in 2019. Obviously, we missed some years.
Mr. Bade, may I suggest, well, I think we're all very interested in what you have to say, but I think this would better suited if you came back with a formal presentation and got on our presentation side of the calendar.
Oh, I'd be happy to do that sometime.
I think that would be, give you the opportunity to, to give a more complete presentation. I do appreciate that Ms. Gollum gave a speaker card and ceded her three minutes to you, which is why I allowed you to continue to speak. That's really unusual. We generally don't do that.
Right.
But I'd love that you come back on a formal agenda item and make your presentation. But I didn't get the October 26th watershed.
Yes, and that's why I wanted to bring one of these reports for each council member with the invitation sheet on it. And then I'll place one of those on the desk here for any member of the public that would like it. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it. I needed to do it before the 26th. That's why I came today.
No, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, a public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone else here in the chambers that wishes to give public comment on an item not on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll turn to our city clerk and ask if we have any raised hands. Resume?
We have six hands raised.
Is that for general public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. This is general public comment. Who's speaking?
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I wanted to address one of the other city councillors earlier that was talking about diversity and inclusion. And I wanted to say diversity means fewer white people, inclusion means exclusion of white people, and equity means stealing from white people. You can learn more about this by watching Defiant, a documentary by Devon Stack on GTVflyers.com. I also wanted to say, have any of you ever heard of the Talmud? For those that don't know, it's one of the books that DJI faith uses to guide them. It can be found in every synagogue across America and the world. I welcome you to fact check my claims and consider what you may have previously believed to be wrong. Here's some examples of scripture from the Talmud. Sanhedrin 58B, if a non-Jew hits a Jew, he must be killed. Sanhedrin 57A, what a Jew.
You know, sir, sir, I'm gonna have to interrupt you here, sir. This doesn't appear to be a subject matter within the jurisdiction of the council. It appears offensive to the audience here. I'm gonna ask you to either bring the public comment that is of interest to the city of Pleasant Hill and the residents that are here. And if you, if that's all you have to say, then we'll thank you and bring in the next speaker.
I have more comment.
Yeah, thank you. Bring in the next speaker, please.
Sam Eddick?
My clock's at like a minute and a half. I thought I had three minutes. Do you mind resetting? Thank you. My name is Sam Eddick, and I have a question that I would like to put directly to the city councillors. How much is the ADL paying you guys to censor the First Amendment right that we have that's God given as Americans? I mean, the ADL.
Sam, Sam, I appreciate your right to free speech and, and we support free speech, but we do not support hate speech.
It's disgusting that they're able to pay you guys off and censor Americans. We're trying to just go ahead and get their public comment out. I find it very un-American, very unpatriotic. And I don't know why you guys are accepting this hot money. Like, do you guys please explain why the ADL called you guys, gave you a nice script to go say anytime somebody says the word Jew or Jew-ish?
Thank you, Sam. And next speaker, please.
Mary Fagan?
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Fagan, we can hear you.
Wonderful. So my first, I, I, I had a whole thing prepared, but I really wanted to touch on the Brown Act and the First Amendment. And what you just did to the last two speakers, I believe, was and I, and I, you know, I, I did announce all hate, but I believe that, that that was, that was unconstitutional. And I, and I would stress you to look into reading 42 USC 1983 and, and hear me out. I don't, I just don't want the city to get sued, right? So I think it's in your best interest if you allow these speakers to, to speak and expel all the Jews and niggers that are in the city.
Ms. Fagan, Ms. Fagan, that is offensive. Ms. Fagan.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, before we have the next speaker, I think you should reiterate that this is disruptive to this meeting.
The comments have been extremely disruptive and offensive to everyone here in the chambers and anyone who's participating electronically. It's outside the jurisdiction of the council, and we cannot proceed in order by allowing these people to speak in the, in the manner that they are.
Tuka Naga?
Hey y'all, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
We can.
My name is Tuka Naga, and I just want to say thank you guys for everything that y'all do. God bless y'all. Black Lives Matter. I was walking in my community and I asked y'all, please not to cut this off. This is really important to the black community, to all minorities out here. And I just want to say that I was walking in my community and I seen this flyer and I thought it was hateful. And it was promoting, I thought, you know, like racism in my community and homophobia. And I started looking at it and I started reading it. And it said on there like, like these Jewish people are doing like this.
Mr. Nuga, you're really on subject matters outside the jurisdiction of the city council. I do appreciate your comments, supporting diversity.
Sir, these people are sucking the baby penis and they're hurt.
All right, so I'm gonna thank you and terminate the call. So this is disruptive to the city meeting. It's distracting us from the purpose. The comments are hurtful to members here, and we just won't tolerate it. I read our statement at the beginning of the meeting that as it relates to public comment, this is what we have experienced in other communities. And I think the result will be that we will terminate remote access to city council meetings and go back to where we were pre-pandemic, where council members will be here in person and we will be happy to receive comment in person. But my request of the city manager and city attorney is going forward, we have no more remote access for public comment. Do we have any other callers?
Yes. Chris Shopples?
Hey, if you guys are gonna get rid of Zoom calls, then all I want to say is fuck niggers and fuck Jews.
Thank you, thank you.
Christopher Berry?
Hello? Yes, hello?
Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Berry.
I want to say the Jews get what they deserve in Israel.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate that these comments are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. They are disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting.
Thank you. Is there any other callers online?
Yes, we have three callers left. Consuelo?
Hello, I'm not like one of those previous callers, but I'm kind of confused on why you shut, I understand the shutting down those last people because they were rude and and just whatever. But I didn't understand why you shut down the first person when he mentioned the Jews, but you didn't shut down the guy when he mentioned Black Lives Matter. I'm just kind of confused.
I shut them both down. And if you have nothing further on the subject matter of the council, then I will thank you for your public comment and we'll take the next caller.
That was it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Andre Zaro?
Hello?
Yes, you're Pleasant Hill City Council.
Fuck you, kikes.
Thank you. Goodbye. Disruptive, offensive, not within the subject matter of the city council.
Hi, Carter.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, regarding these past couple callers, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm disabled, so I wouldn't be able to show up and speak. You know, just because these people want to tell the truth about the kikes and the niggers.
You're, you're talking about subjects that are outside the juris, the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, the disruptive to our meeting and ask that you, thank you and say goodbye.
There are no additional callers.
All right. I'm just seriously offended that our opportunity for public comment provides such a disruptive content. I apologize to the Fearer family. But trying to do a good thing for a sixth grader to expose him to public service. And instead he hears people swearing, saying offensive things, and clearly just calling in to disrupt and offend. There's no purpose other than to create a reaction. So I think our goal is to just, you know, take a deep breath here and seeing no other cards or hands for public comment. We're going to close public comment and we're going to turn it back to Mayor Eli.
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate council discussions of these items unless requested by council member prior to the time council votes on the motion to adopt. May I have motion to adopt the consent calendar?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Noah.
Noah?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
I'll abstain from 9.1 and say yes on everything else.
Flirty.
Yes. Well, I feel like if you just take a break and walk around the block and come back, just kind of bring some sage here in the room. But do want to take this time to acknowledge my trusty left-handed associate here, Eli Fearer, our honorary mayor for the day. Eli is here with his parents, Igor and Sophia Fearer, and Eli's younger brother Robbie. Had the pleasure of dining with them before our meeting, but I want to tell you a few things about Eli that I learned today. He's 11 years old. His birthday is March 21. He is a sixth grader at Pleasant Hill Middle School. His favorite subject right now is history, and it's history because of the teacher. The teacher truly inspires him. Eli had, I'll call it an athletic injury over the summer where he broke his foot. He was in a boot for a couple months and a cast for another month. And the foot is still not healing, so preventing him from becoming the track and football star that he aspires to. He hopes by the spring he'll be playing flag football. His best friend is.
Louis. Louis?
And hopefully Louis is online watching you live. So we thank Eli for his civic mindedness. We thank his parents. The Mayor for the Day is a program that City Council established many years ago as part of the fundraising aspects for the schools in the city of Pleasant Hill that we auctioned off a Mayor for the Day opportunity. And Eli's parents were the lucky winners of the auction item earlier this year. So Eli, I'm sure you might have some words you want to share.
Yeah. I thank my mom for coming here because she had stuff to do. And she said she'll do it when we get back.
Your brother Robbie wants you to say something about him.
Um, I have anything to say about him. Thank you for being here.
All right. Well, in commemoration of your day as the honorary mayor, we have a certificate of recognition, Eli Fearer as Mayor for the Day of October 16, 2023. We also have a bag of various items that a sixth grader will find very exciting. Everything that has the Pleasant Hill logo on it that's been made in the last 10 years will be in this bag. So Mayor Eli, thank you for your service.
Stand behind you.
Want to bring? We're gonna keep moving along here. Thank you to Mayor Eli for his assistance and we'll turn to the action calendar. Item 10.1 is to adopt a resolution accepting the proposal and awarding the contract for the city of Pleasant Hill's Police Department Underground Storage Tank Replacement Project. Anne James, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Anne James, Public Works Manager for the city of Pleasant Hill. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am super disappointed that Mayor Eli is gonna miss my riveting presentation because I would offer that he is the sage that was around the room. So tonight's item before you is to accept the proposal and award the contract for the city of Pleasant Hill's Police Department Underground Storage Tank Replacement Projects and authorizing the city manager to exercise a contract with Petroanalytical. So just a little background, for those of you that have been in the rear parking lot at the police department, that is their fueling station. There's the pump, the underground storage tank, and their canopy. All of our police department fuels up there. And in times of need, other city vehicles have been able to fuel up there as well. They currently have a 12,000 gallon, single walls, unleaded fuel tank. It has a fuel pump, a fuel island, and overhead canopy. It was designed and installed in late 1996, early 97. In 1998, we did a small project to install containment manholes, overfill prevention system and a tank monitoring system as was required by the state at that time. And then in 2002, we installed just double wall piping on the tank. In September of 2014, the California State Senate passed Senate Bill 445. It was a state mandate that required all single wall tanks in the state of California to be closed by the end of December 2025. If they're not closed, they'll be red tagged by the county health department and the cities municipalities, gas stations, anybody in the state that still has a single wall tank is subject to penalties of $500 to $5,000 a day. I just want to be clear, it's not just municipalities, it's anybody in the state that has a single wall tank. So within the next two years, everybody in the state with one will be scrambling not only to find a tank, but to replace the tank. So I worked with the city attorney's office on this project because it's very technical, not only, I mean, construction wise, we removed the tank, we put in a new tank. It's going back in exactly the same spot, but there's a lot of environmental things that have to go along with it, a lot of permitting from the fire department. uh, things that have to go along with it, a lot of permitting from the fire department, from the health department, from the county, uh, from Bay Area Quality Regional Control Board, um. There's a lot of professional expertise that's required, and we don't have a lot of local contractors to give us a competitive bid. So I worked with the city attorney's office and we determined we would go out with a competitive bid RFP. Uh, the city attorney's office helped me draft that to make sure that we are compliant not only with our city laws, but this is an ARPA-funded project to make sure we have all the language in there we need for an ARPA-funded project. Uh, so working with them, we issued the RFP on September fifth in twenty twenty-three. Um, we sent it to three local firms that we know are able to do the work. Only one firm, Petroanalytical, was able to give us a proposal back uh by the October third deadline. Uh, I met with them, we did oral interview with them to make sure that their proposal was rated on their qualifications, understanding, project schedule, and in that project schedule, um, can they get a tank, can they get a twelve thousand gallon tank, can they get all the piping, can they get a fuel pump? Do they have, can they get all the inspections, can they get everybody that we need onboard to get the tank out of the ground, the new one in the ground, and do it all within our budget? Uh, so Petroanalytical came forward with their best proposal for us. Um, they're going to be removing and disposing the existing system, and that includes cleaning it, right? We can't just pull the old one out of the ground and get rid of it, it has to be flushed, it has to be cleaned with all of the requirements that the state requires. They will be installing a new twelve thousand gallon, double-walled underground storage tank and piping, new dispenser, new island, a new leak detection system, everything that the new system needs to have. Uh, it also, new, new requirements is a new vapor cleaning system that will also be part of the tank. They will be responsible for getting all the permits, all the inspections, everything signed off before we're able to um open it up live uh and remove and reinstall the existing canopy that's there. So, we budgeted um one point two million dollars of ARPA funds for this project, if you recall, it was part of our CIP that was approved, the twenty-two, twenty-seven CIP. Uh, working with them, their total bid, soup to nuts, no hidden anything, is one, one million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Uh, and they are willing and able to start work, you know, immediately. So immediately starting work doesn't mean they're going to be pulling the tank out of the ground tomorrow, I've been working with the police department. Uh, we're probably a couple months away before they're going to take that offline, they're going to do all of the soil testing and all the other stuff we need, get everybody onboard just, just to get started. They will, though, order the tank immediately because it's about a year. You know, a good year to get a tank that size, double-walled and get it in the ground. Um, so Petroanalytical, just, just to let you know, you may recall that uh two years ago, we had a problem with our underground storage tank at the Public Services Center. Uh, Petroanalytical was the company that came in and helped us repair that tank. Um, they do have the technical knowledge and expertise as well as all of the contacts that we need to bring this project not only into budget, but to completion. Their project schedule right now is to be completely done by the end of June of next year, so a little less than a year. And now, any questions? That is not our tank, by the way, that's just a cute picture.
None of them were.
Uh, thank you, Ms. James, for the presentation, any questions of Ms. James from the council, uh, Councilmember Nowak?
Uh, just one question, do they do any testing of the ground around it to ensure?
That's the first thing that's going to happen.
Okay, they are going to test the ground.
So what, what, what we're going to do in, um, the county has already tentatively agreed to this, is test the four corners before we remove the tank.
Okay.
And that way it'll save us time that we don't take the tank out and then have to wait.
Councilmember Vincent?
You answered half my question, uh, they have done two prior projects for the city, you said they did the one two years ago. Do you recall when they did the uh, the annual sensor installation?
Well, that was last year, the annual sensor project, so they've actually done two projects for us, but well, the one that's most close to this project is when they repaired our underground storage tank.
Okay.
At, at PSC.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comment, uh, we'll open public comment on this item, that was the end of your presentation?
That is the end of my presentation.
Alright, well, um, if uh you have public comment on this item, uh, we invite you to come to the podium and fill out a card. Anyone here in the chambers have public comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Can you repeat the Zoom address?
Certainly, uh, the Zoom is uh meeting ID eight one eight, eight one four two, eight seven five one. The passcode is zero zero four, one one two. Do we have any Zoom callers on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Uh, seeing no public comment here in chambers, none online, we'll close public comment and bring this back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'd like to know further discussion, I'll make the motion to approve the project.
Second?
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Councilmember Nowak, may we have the roll call?
Nowak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Alright, moving on to item ten point two, this is denominated as a study session on revision, revisions to the city of Pleasant Hill adopted housing element for twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. I believe Troy Fujimoto will be introducing the item, welcome, Mr. Fujimoto.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, uh, this is a study session item, uh, this is for the Pleasant Hill Housing Element that we revisited a couple months ago, uh, we, just a quick summary because I'm going to have our consultant Ryan Lester from Minter Harnish to give you a more thorough presentation. Uh, but we are back before you, if you recall back in uh May, we did, uh, the city council did adopt the housing element. We did submit it to HCD, State of California Housing and Community Development. Uh, we did get comments back from them, uh, since that time, we have had informal discussions with HCD to get clarification on their comments, and so what is before you this evening is a revision to the adopted housing element, and we hope to collect additional input and feedback. Uh, we will be collecting that and we'll make any last amendments that are needed, and we'll be submitting back to HCD. Uh, there is a seven-day review period once we post it, uh, where we will collect additional public comments. Um, and once that happens, we will then resubmit, and we hope that HCD will certify us. And a lot of our uh responses that we have prepared has been in conjunction with uh talking with HCD to get that clarification, to make sure that we are on the right path. Uh, with that, I will introduce Ryan Lester, who will give you an overview and we'll go into greater detail to the proposed revisions.
Before you go, um, I just want to be clear that the scope of the discussion tonight is just simply the five points raised by HCD in its comment letter or the subject matter?
That's correct, there is no formal action requested of the city council. When the city council adopted uh the uh housing element previously, there was a provision in your direction that uh staff could make revisions to respond to HCD comments, and so we are using that to be able to resubmit and making these clarifications and revisions um as requested by HCD.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello, Mayor, council members, thank you for having me, once again, my name is Ryan Lester with Minter Harnish. Um, I've been the, the team lead on the housing element for the consultant team uh throughout this project, so um, we'll, we'll have a quick uh recap of um, of some of the HCD comments and some of our suggested revisions, and then we'll, we'll look to get your, your direction. Um, so uh I'll start just uh quickly with a, a project update, just to recap kind of where we've been recently. Um, then the majority of my presentation will be uh a summary of the HCD comments and our proposed responses and why. And then we'll end by, um, we'll just wrap up talking next steps in the project. So, um, uh, as you recall, we were, we were before the planning commission and then um, the city council in May, um, after the element was adopted, we created the um, the official um adopted document, we um kind of buttoned it up, sent it on to HCD, um, they took the full sixty days that they're allowed to, to review it and uh didn't talk to us during that time at all, they just issued a comment letter at the end and there, um, they had a, a number of points that they would like either clarified or corrected in the document um to achieve certification, so that HCD comment letter was received on July thirty-first, um, and we've taken time to try to um, work with them uh, uh, in order to uh respond as, as they see fit, um, but also within what, what's good for the city. Um, so it's been a few months now, um, and, and we're ready to, to propose some suggested changes. So, um, there were a, a number of comments in the HCD letter, my presentation will actually go through them in order of the comment letter, if you've read the comment letter. Um, uh, and so we'll just go through those, if you haven't read the comment letter, it's available online on the project website. We've also made available um, a table that outlines both the comment and then how we responded to it. I tried to put page numbers in there, and then the um, the housing element, if you've seen it in the staff report, is it shows the red line, um, the strikeout and the additions um in blue, so you can see, you can dial in right to, to what we've done, so. Um, the first few comments were on uh the new fair housing analysis. Um, and uh, there's one category of analysis that you have to provide on racially con- concentrated areas of affluence. And HCD felt like we needed some additional analysis on these areas. And then based on that analysis, and they say this a lot with most of their comments, based on that analysis, you might have to provide some more program actions. Um, you might have to beef up your programs to respond to that revised analysis, so uh, we provided the analysis, it was, it's actually fairly short. Um, excuse me, um, but then we've, um, as part of the actions, because we really in this cycle, if you remember from my previous presentations, you, we really have to address fair housing issues thoroughly and meaningfully. So we've gone ahead and um, there were three of our programs, Programs I, T, and FF that we felt like could, could have some geographic targeting to those areas. So we've go, gone ahead and added that to those programs without changing the, the intent of the program. And then in pro, in one program, Program FF, uh, we, we've committed the city to a new action to monitor development in these areas um throughout the planning period, and then to implement some incentives for lower and moderate income development in these areas, the idea is we want more lower and moderate income development in these really affluent areas, um, and so we've, we've added that there, we haven't defined what that would be. The city will have to in the next, I believe, two years, define what those incentives would be, um, we didn't feel it was necessary to say that upfront, the city can really reflect on what's best for the city uh in, in implementing that action. Uh, similarly, HCD um commented that um, uh, uh, significant and meaningful programs are needed to promote housing mobility into areas of high opportunity. These areas, um, they overlap generally with the racially concentrated areas of affluence. Um, so we did a few things because we really felt like the city is actually doing a ton through the general and focus area effort that was just adopted with the general plan to really promote um housing mobility in these areas already, so we had a program that kind of talked about that, but it also talked about the rezone requirements for the arena. So what we've done is we've, we've separated those actions, so we moved anything that is towards the arena into Program C and left Program F to just be, hey, HCD, look at all this stuff the city is doing beyond what's required for the arena. And so really, Program F is that program. And then in that program, what I did was I looked at all the focus area changes through the general plan, and I removed all the parcels that we already included towards the arena, and I removed any of the parcels that weren't in uh an RC-A-A, and there were quite a few left, there was actually, the majority of them are in these RC-AAs. So I calculated, okay, what's the acreage of those areas? What, what could potential capacity be in those areas, and I included that wording in the program, just to say, hey, HCD, this is big, this, this a lot of higher-density rezones that are happening in the city, and um, the city really is addressing this requirement. Uh, we spoke with HCD, they actually agreed with us, uh, and so um, just by, by kind of pointing out what the city's already doing, we were able to um, work to meet this requirement. Um, another fair housing um topic, we now have to provide what's called place-based strategies for community revitalization, so we're not just addressing uh the high resource areas and affluent areas, but we also need to have some strategies to address um neighborhoods that are considered low or moderate resource areas. Um, so we added a few things um to some programs in order to, to bolster our efforts there. So first, in Program Z, which is the Housing Trust Fund program, uh, we committed the city to um, or were proposing to um identify funding for improvements um, to support redevelopment projects in low-resource areas. And then HCD always wants you to put some kind of goal, you can't just say, yeah, we're going to go look for funding, right? Uh, they want you to at least guess at a number that you can measure by in the future, so um, we, we've suggested a goal of providing a hundred thousand dollars in direct funding, in lieu fees or reduced fees. Um, and to work towards trying to complete two capital improvement projects in low-resource areas. Um, in um, a few programs, that's um, the Home Ownership Assistance Program, the Neighborhood Preservation Program, and the Emergency Repair Program, uh, we've committed the city, or we're proposing to commit the city to prioritizing funding um in support of households or projects in these areas, just adding some targeting um, uh, uh, geographics there. Um, in Program NN, which deals with rehabilitation, um, we've proposed that the city commit to um, some extra engagement with those communities and in those communities um to talk about what programs are available. Um, and it can be through either, we, we didn't define it strictly, it could be through workshops, advertising campaigns, getting the information out is what's important and into those communities. Um, and then with the um, Program OO, the Capital Improvement Program, um, we've suggested giving priority to capital improvement projects in lower resource areas. And then again, we have to set a goal, so we set a goal of um, of completing three projects in the planning period, and those can be, um, they're not strictly low-resource areas, it could be low or moderate resource areas with higher concentrations of fair housing issues, so you could think of the, kind of the east side of the city. Um, now, there were a few comments on the site's inventory, the first comments were on our um, two new vacant sites. HCD, um, as we did, HCD read all the public comments, and uh, they wanted a little more information on some of the constraints on the site. So, um, we expanded the analyses um of each site to include um identification of um infrastructure constraints, environmental issues, um, site-specific conditions. Um, uh, and, uh, and we also talked about the outreach that the city's had with one of the property owners uh of one of those sites. And then the program related to those two sites, um, we've expanded it to include uh, commitment to amend the municipal code to address constraints, um, particularly the requirement that hillside parcels be rezoned, um, and, and that zoning, the density in that zoning is limited to extremely low density. Um, and then we've, uh, we've also suggested annual engagement with the property owners, so reaching out to them once a year um, at minimum, and then we've said, we had an action in there related to um, the city will, will assist affordable housing developers in the pursuit of funds for development on these sites. Uh, HCD wanted to see a target, you know, how much are you talking about, what can you use to judge that by? So, uh, we just set a, a kind of a target goal of um, of um, obtaining two hundred thousand dollars per site through uh federal and state grants. Um, a similar comment came in on our, excuse me, on our non-vacant sites, so our housing opportunity sites. Um, they, they wanted to see some additional analysis, they felt like the city doesn't have a ton of um, recent trends in developing affordable housing at high density. So they asked us to look wider, so we looked at the whole region and what are some projects that are happening in the region, um, and how are they connected to our housing opportunity sites? So we expanded our analysis to do so. Um, there's quite a bit of new text, um, but we pulled in projects from the, the um, the county, basically, from Walnut Creek, anywhere in the region. We added a discussion of um, those redevelopment trends, and then we added a table that identifies all those projects and then has a column that identifies, okay, which of our housing opportunity sites are similar? Um, so that HCD can see, hey, our sites are, they're lining up with what's happening in the region. We may not have that history in Pleasant Hill yet, um, but these, that doesn't mean it can't happen in the region, it's happening in the region. Um, and then uh, we added text to um, the descriptions of um, all of our low, low-income housing opportunity sites, just to better connect them to um, both the Choice and Aging Proz- Project and eighty-five Cleveland, wherever there were similarities, we wanted to point that out for HCD. Um, they had a few comments on our programs, um, typically, um, comments on programs from HCD are either, hey, you need to beef this up, or you, you've done it well, but you need to include this civic language, well, they had that comment on. you, you've done it well, but you need to include this specific language. Well, they had that comment on a couple of our programs. Um, so, uh, on our programs related to, um, the municipal code updates for compliance with state law, uh, as related to supportive housing, ADUs and group homes, they just wanted to see some specific language. We went ahead and provided that. Um, it didn't change the, the effect of the program or the intent of the program. Uh, it, they, they just wanted a little more, um, information. Um, and then with program H, it's related to development standards. They, um, they felt like, um, uh, our commitment to remove constraints, uh, to development through, um, adjusting development standards shouldn't just be for lower income housing. They wanted it applied to all housing development, um, in the city. And so we just literally just removed the term lower income from that, um, program. Um, they had a few additional, um, comments on constraints. So when it comes to reasonable accommodation, the, um, findings required for approval had a couple of things that they felt like were constraints. Um, if I remember correctly, they were, they had to do with, um, impacts to, um, neighboring properties, things like that. HCD feels like those kind of findings requiring those is really putting the project or the applicant through a, a CUP, a conditional use permit process, and they don't like to see that. Um, so we've identified those constraints in the document. And then in the program related to reasonable accommodation, we added a commitment to update the ordinance by twenty twenty-five. Um, they had, um, there's a new law, AB thirteen ninety-eight, um, that dictates the timing of a housing element because they had additional comments for us and our, even though our housing element was adopted within the right time period, they didn't actually certify that version. They had more comments. Um, actually, the program, because of that, the program actions related to arena rezones, uh, we don't get three years to do it. The city has to do it within one year of the adoption deadline. Um, so we made that change. And, um, I just wanted to point out here that that's in program C now. Um, and we've updated the timing to, um, commit to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for those reasons. But that's, um, inclusive of only our housing opportunity sites and the, the two rezone, vacant rezone sites. It doesn't include the greater, um, uh, focus area rezones that are going to have to happen for consistency with the adopted general plan. The city can take their time and do those through the zoning code update as planned. Um, regarding emergency shelters, there's a brand new state law, AB twenty-three thirty-nine that has a whole bunch of new requirements. And they said, well, if you're resubmitting your housing element, you're gonna have to address this new law. Um, AB twenty-three thirty-nine has a lot of things going on, uh, and a lot of new requirements. Um, some of those requirements are, you know, y- yes, you have to allow emergency shelters by right in at least one zone, but now that zone has to be a residentially, a, a zone that allows residential uses, right? Um, also in your zoning code, the definition of emergency shelter has to include, um, what they're calling interim interventions, like navigation centers, um, bridge housing and respite or recuperative care. They feel that that needs to fit, state law does, is requiring that that fits within emergency shelters. Um, and then you also have to say, okay, you're allowing it in this zone. What's the capacity for emergency shelters in that zone? And you almost have to do like a mini sites inventory related to those parcels. So, um, we provided that analysis. And what we found was that, um, emergency shelters are currently allowed in the LI zone. Um, but parcels within that zone are not in proximity to transportation and services, uh, which is another requirement of AB twenty-three thirty-nine. Um, additionally, the zone doesn't have any current vacant capacity. And you have to prove that that capacity is enough to meet the most recent point in time count, um, for the city. And looking at the parcels, it looks like they're all, they all have current uses, um, in each of the parcels. So, um, we found that. And then, um, finally, the, that zone, the LI zone, doesn't allow residential, which is now required. So, um, we haven't dictated what the city, um, where the city needs to allow these yet, but we did have to include a program that commits the city to, um, taking up that update, to updating the, the zoning code to allow emergency shelters in a zone that allows residential uses and has enough capacity to meet the identified need. And to do so within two years. And then also to update the definition of emergency shelter to include those interim interventions. So, um, it's, it's quite a lot of change and the city will have to process that in the next two years. So, um, finally, I just wanted to summarize what we've done. So, uh, we didn't just receive the, the letter from HCD and then go make a bunch of changes. We actually spoke with our reviewer. Uh, we had a, a really, really successful meeting with her. Um, she outlined the things that HCD wants to see. We were allowed to talk and to, um, I mean, it's never a negotiation with HCD, but you can provide clarifications, um, as to what the city's doing, um, to, to try to, um, combat some maybe misunderstanding of the document. Um, we, we had a great meeting with them. Uh, we made our suggested revisions and then we actually, they let us submit it for an informal review. So our reviewer spent, I believe, four weeks really digging in. It's supposed to be two, but she actually got sick for a while. So she had it for four weeks. Um, and, uh, she came back to us and said, you know, we don't have any further suggestions at this time. So, um, she didn't find any compliance issues with our revised draft and that makes us feel very confident. So quickly, next steps in the process. So, uh, we'll need to finalize any further revisions um, to the adopted housing element, um, based on direction we receive here today. Uh, we will then post the document, the revised document, the full thing, uh, to the website, to the city website. We'll send out e-blast to let everybody know it's there. And we have to leave it up for at least seven days and collect public input again. Um, and then, uh, after we do so, then we could submit the revised adopted housing element back to HCD. They will take another sixty-day review, um, unfortunately. Um, and, uh, and, uh, we feel confident that they're gonna certify it at this point. It, it's never a hundred percent guarantee, but having that, those discussions with HCD, having them informally review and give us feedback, um, i- it makes us feel pretty confident about that. So thank you for having me today.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Lester? At council level? Councilmember Noah?
So, um, on some of these where we've committed to do things in a year and two years and things like that, is HCD gonna be, do they have a monitoring group to monitor and will they be checking us? Or will we have to file things with HCD to prove that we've done all those things as we've suggested?
Yeah, yeah. So every year, um, all jurisdictions are, are required to submit an annual progress report to HCD that goes through each of their, um, housing element programs and identifies what's happened, uh, what's been done, what's been completed, um, what, what's still being worked on. Um, it, it doesn't mean that you have to hit, eh, you know, every goal that you've set for yourself. But I will say where you've said, we're gonna change our zoning code to do something, they will hold you to that. Um, they can, like, if you said, yeah, we're gonna remove constraints in our zoning code and we're gonna do it in two years. If it gets three years down the road, they can act, and you haven't done it, they can actually decertify your housing because you, you're not being honest, right? Um, and that, that's a new authority that they have. Um, if you go further than that and you're still making actions that go against the housing element, um, they do have an accountability team. It's just lawyers and they're looking for someone to sue. Um, so they are, they're, they're being very serious. It's a brand new, um, uh, unit for them. Uh, and we've seen a few, uh, pieces of legislation come out, um, but not a ton yet.
Um, my next question, um, you sort of define for the public housing mobility, what that
Yeah, yeah. So the idea is, um, HCD doesn't want to see all the lower income units and that are existing as well as the, the planned, uh, capacity to be all in areas that are, uh, have lower amount of resources. Right? Whether it be economic, educational resources, environmental resources, access to parks, things like that. They wanna see that actually you're working to make some more affordable options in higher resource areas so that people can feel like they're not stuck in a neighborhood that doesn't have as mu- as many resources. That they can actually, their, their, their whole household can move to a neighborhood with more opportunities. And so it's, it's just the, the act of making sure that there are, uh, a diverse range of housing types and affordabilities, uh, throughout the city.
Um, there was the, some discussion in the preservation or, um, revitalization section about committing to do projects. So, and the dollar amount, in my opinion, was pretty small for any revitalization project, uh, from what I've seen so far. So, what does a project really mean? Does that mean an area that, that is currently affordable housing needing to be? We need to help get grant money to, uh, improve that location or?
Yeah, I mean, that would be one type of a project, certainly. Um, but also being that it's a neighborhood revitalization program, it can be city-led efforts to improve, uh, services or transportation or, you know, capital improvement projects, things like that.
Okay. Um, in, uh, the emergency shelters, we're just gonna have to find new zones to put them in. Right now, we've just got the light industrial area, uh, zone for emergency shelters and we're gonna have to find different zones.
Yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to find a, a zone that allows residential uses, uh, where you feel it's appropriate to allow emergency shelters by right. You can't, you can't have a conditional use permit, um, for at least one zone.
And this is just zoning. This, th- there, we don't have, um, requirements in this for development or production of emergency shelters, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's it for my questions so far. Thanks.
Good one. Councilmember Vincent? Uh, based on what you said, uh, this has been reviewed by the reviewer at HCD. Were all of the goals you described tonight included in the version that was reviewed?
Yes, yes, they were. Thank you.
Councilmember Shu. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, going off of, uh, council member Noah's question with respect to the emergency, uh, shelter, uh, under AB two-three-three-nine, is there a length of time? What con- the length of emergency? Is that something that's declared by the state or something like that?
No.
An emergency shelter?
No, no. Um, it, i- if you tried to restrict, you're actually excluding, um, uh, the homeless population, you know, residents experiencing homelessness, uh, they would have a problem with that.
Okay. So it, it's, okay, gotcha. Um, and then with program, um, NN, um, it's, I was kind of curious, like, what, you, you said there, there was a workshop. I mean, could you kind of expound on that for the public? Like, what, what would that kind of workshop be? Who's that? Is it a funding workshop? Is it, what kind of person would be there to help someone in that?
Yeah, so, um, the, it depends on what, what the goals are of the city in that year. There, the, the, the commitment is to do it each year. So, uh, one year you may hold a workshop or, um, an information session to gather information from people on what their needs are. Um, and talk about, okay, what are the rehabilitation needs in our community? How do we understand them before we even go? So that, that may be what you do one year. Then the next year, uh, you may have a, an advertising campaign to advertise a program that you've put in place. Um, or that you're considering and you wanna take input on. Um, then the following year, it could be, um, holding a, a workshop in one of those neighborhoods to let them know, hey, homeowners, come out to this. We have a program that you might wanna, you may benefit from and we wanna let you know about it. Right? Not just putting it out on your website and being like, okay, everybody knows now. But actually going into those communities and giving that information to folks, uh, either, either through, um, you know, a, a targeted campaign or through a workshop.
Thank you. Questions for now. Thank you.
So, uh, you re- talked a lot about removing constraints. I mean, honestly, it just feels like we're just giving up control. Uh, that, that our local discretion about the zoning and look and feel of our city, uh, in an effort to get approved and comply with state mandates, we have to eliminate the various controls about the look and feel and location of, um, development in our city. Is that, that a fair summary of what eliminate? I'm sorry. Uh, I was asking about removing constraints and that it feels to me like it's just simply giving up control that to comply with the state mandates here and removing constraints, we no longer have the ability to regulate locally where we want development, the density of development. Um, and isn't that what removing constraints really means?
Uh, I know that, um, all of my clients feel that way and I'm a consultant. I, I don't do what you do. So it's hard for me to say, but I will say that the state is using a lot of authority to dictate some things that they very specifically think are constraints. And on those matters, you, you have very little wiggle room.
Right. Just focusing on the emergency shelter aspect. I mean, it's a small, very small component of what we're dealing with here. But when we designated the light industrial, uh, area as a place for emergency shelters, that was to avoid the by right penalty. If we didn't designate a zoning district for emergency shelters, they would have the by right. Now, if we don't designate emergency shelters in a residential, uh, zoned area, the by right, uh, remedy is available for construction of an emergency shelter.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, folks at the state argued that a lot of cities are, are, okay, yeah, they're allowing it by right in a zone which we required. Uh, however, it's not near, not near transportation or services. There's no, how do we know if there's any capacity? Um, and unfortunately, in, in this case with Pleasant Hill, looking at all the LI zoned parcels, they all have existing businesses in them. Um, I was, it was very hard to find one that even had any available space in the building. So, um, in this case, uh, it may actually increase your emergency shelter capacity, um, in a positive way.
No, I, the, the hope is that all these changes will, uh, render a positive result. But I find it anomalous that for emergency shelters, there's a focus on the availability of services and transportation, but that is not a prerequisite for designation of certain parcels for high-density multifamily, low-income development, which seems anomalous to me.
A- and I understand that frustration. I do.
Uh, any other comments from the council?
I have, I have comments, but I have many questions.
We'll save the comments for deliberation or do you want to be for a public comment?
I wanted to do it for a public comment. I do, just
Go forward.
So I just, eh, you know, the, this is, uh, it seems to me that most cities are having to go through three go-rounds of this. Uh, and some maybe even more, but it, most of the cities around us are going through this. And there's a lot of angst all o- over this. Um, I met with Assemblyman Grayson along with, uh, council members from Walnut Creek and Concord, uh, to discuss this issue. Assemblyman, um, Grayson indicated, and he, he's working on it, scheduling a time for those of us that met with him to meet with the head of HCD to talk about our concerns on this whole process. And, uh, I, hopefully he gets that done soon, but, um, at least we had the opportunity to meet with, meet with him. Um, I also had an opportunity to speak to, um, Congressman DeSagne about that and express my concern. And also, uh, express my concern over the conflicting goals of the state, um, and, and several areas. And this is, we have a lot of mandates on greenhouse gas emissions, increasing transit, uh, things like that. And they're very, eh, they're opposite of, of what HCD is doing. And how do we get these things to, to meet up? How do they get them to a general goal? Same thing is happening at MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Um, I sit on that representing Contra Costa County. Uh, they are looking to do a regional housing bond measure, um, affordable housing bond measure, um, next year. Somewhere between ten and twenty billion dollars for the nine Bay Area counties. Um, and interestingly, despite the fact that we need to help get grant funding, eighty percent of those funds will be directly allocated to counties and four cities. None of those cities are in Contra Costa County. Uh, so we will be looking to the county to see how they are planning on appropriating those funds. Um, my understanding at this point is most of those funds, to the extent the bond measure gets approved, will go to pay for projects that are already in the works. Um, they're not new projects, um, but projects that are in works in San Jose, El Cerrito, Richmond, uh, Antioch, uh, Pittsburgh and some areas like uh Pittsburgh, and some areas like that, there won't be a whole lot of excess funding available. But interestingly, their requirement, um, MTC's goal and their trans- TOD policy or Transit Oriented Development Policy um is focusing on building near transit, near rail. And so, and there's a whole lot of obligations for a city if they want to get one O-BAG grants, one Bay Area grants money, that they have to build within a half mile of a transit area. So it's the two policies, HCD's requirements, MTC's TOD policy, and I, I apologize for the, all the acronyms, are also in conflict. And so it makes our job extremely difficult. Um, and right now, our focus has to be the housing element certification. But we're gonna, I'm certainly gonna continue work with MTC, their advocates in Sacramento with Assemblyman Grayson, and, and hopefully with some support from uh Mark DeSonnier as well to try to get these goals making more sense for everybody and then having that flow through HCD and their policies going forward. So I know that's a whole lot of words, but I, I wanted, a lot of people kept saying, you know, why aren't you fighting for the city? And there are a lot of people fighting for city, local control, lots of people fighting for local control. Um, and I didn't want you to think that we're not doing the same thing, but we have to get a housing element certified. And that may make it not pretty and not, not make anybody happy. Um, but we'll be happy to have a housing um element certified. We just may have some unhappy people with what we have to do to get there. So um, I just wanted to make those statements about um some of the actions that we are taking to work through Sacramento and wherever to um get more clarity and get better outcomes for us in the long run.
All right, thank you. Before I pu- public comment on this item, we're gonna take a six-minute break to eight forty. We'll be back at eight forty sharp. Thank you.
Uh, welcome back. We're here at the item ten point two, the study session on the revisions to the city of Pleasant Hill's adopted housing element.
Oops. Let's start that again. Uh, welcome back after a brief break. Uh, we're going to continue now with public comment on item ten point two, the study session on revisions to the city of Pleasant Hill adopted housing element for twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. Uh, I did receive, we did receive written correspondence from Jack Prosec and Catherine Schultz. Uh, a public comment now, I have three cards, if there's anyone else in the audience uh here in the chambers that wishes to speak on this matter, to let me know. But we'll start with Ward Walkscand. Did I pronounce that correctly? Walksland, oh, sorry. It was either your handwriting or my reading abilities.
Well, it's mostly my handwriting, I believe.
Well, welcome.
Yeah, um, I have just a few, uh, when the presentation was given here, uh, it's kind of, it was a high level, so there's some details that I could not understand or where they were going. Um, the two sites that, of course, interest to me is the Paso Nogal and the uh, uh, Morello sites. Uh, the current thing that was submitted to the state had, I think, a density of about three hundred units plus or minus a few. In his presentation, he sounds like in talking to the state, uh, given that those are slope sites and probably very difficult to build on, that there would probably be a lower density uh allowed for these sites and probably some criteria could be changed to adjust that. What I would like to know is where did those three hundred units go to? And what is the density of, under the current study site suggested uh for both of those two sites? Uh, and that's kind of the end of my question. So if you could have those addressed to me, I would certainly appreciate it. Because I've tried to read some of the documentation and, and understand where this is at. I find it very, very difficult with the no culture, if you're not into it every day, very, very hard to follow some of the things that are going on. So if you could do that, I would appreciate it. I understand it's a difficult project, but I can't comment on something where I don't understand the details.
I appreciate, I'd love to give you the details. Uh, doesn't seem like we have a lot of speaker cards, even though we have a fair number of audience. Uh, can someone respond to Mr. Walksland's inquiry about the number of units on the Paso Nogal site? Please, yes.
Yeah, so uh, both of those sites are proposed for multifamily high density, which is thirty to forty dwelling units per. Thirty to forty dwelling units per.
So that, that hasn't changed. I, I think, I think what, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Mr. Walksland.
Those, those sites were considered, they're slope, you couldn't build them if you wanted to. And according to the comments from the state, they said slope site could have other considerations. You said in your presentation that they would have lower density. That's not lower density. If you're talking thirty.
Right. Yes. All right, well, we'll keep trying to address that, uh, Mr. Walksland, thank you. Uh, Matt Kennedy. Good evening.
Hello. Hello. Sup, everyone? Um, Matt Kennedy, um, first, I just wanted to say that this is not a housing issue, that this is a local government and planning issue. Um, why weren't Morello terraces in Paso Nogal Hill immediately flagged at risk for these new aggressive laws at project onset in twenty twenty-one? All right, aggressive new laws should have triggered aggressive internal improvements from our departments, particularly planning. So much of this friction could have been managed if our communities were adequately involved from the beginning and each parcel was equitably allocated to ensure homogeneous distribution of housing, not place the entire infrastructure burden on one street. I would at least hope that since the rush to include Morello terraces in Paso Nogal Hill, that you would have improved your accuracy of describing the slopes of these parcels, that you would have considered our community input, but you didn't. And now this revision still contains incorrect sloping information. I'll say that again, the sloping data is still incorrect on both these parcels by a significant margin. This data was previously submitted incorrectly to HCD, called out by the public, and you still cannot get it correct when this information is publicly available. Please explain to me how you're going to lecture about fiduciary duty when your salaried teams and paid consultants can't get basic sloping information correct. After two attempts over months of work, this data is publicly available on parcelquest.com at a field surveyor-level accuracy resolution. And yet we are using Google Earth, which is extremely inaccurate, particularly at a parcel-level area. Parcel Quest utilizes exact county assessor data for its information, not Google Earth napkin calculations, which is what you've been doing. Regardless of what this housing element outcome is, it is clear that the rigor being enforced in our city's efforts from top down is not adequate. I believe this project has shown a spotlight on our leadership's refusal to improve internal systems and set aside their egos. Therefore, I think it is time as voters, we look to shed ourselves of incumbent systems as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, next speaker is Susan Bartlet Bartolani.
Do we want to, do we want to address the sloping issue by Troy?
We'll get there.
I was jotting it down. No, no, go ahead. Well, well, I'm keeping notes.
Because I only have three speaker cards.
I'm keeping notes. We'll, we'll get them there.
Excuse me. I only had three speaker cards, so I thought that we'd take it all and then I'd bring Mr. Lester back in.
Um, I'm just gonna piggyback. Um, it just seems like this whole discussion about involvement of the community that we complained to the HDC about has never happened. If, if what this gentleman has been saying to us constitutes community involvement, I don't, I don't think so. I, I didn't understand one third of what he said. Spoke with letters, um, and nothing, nothing that had to do that directly addressed the issue, which is trying to put housing on Paso Gal and, and Morello is, is crazy. It's crazy because you'd have to like widen the streets, you'd have to give us a new supermarket. There would not, we do not have the facilities. And if he's talking about, well, we have this extra money, that then what will we do? Were they going to widen the streets? You can't even widen the street on Paso Gal. You can't do it. So it seems like taking into consideration the resources that we had that we have right now and, and inviting, inviting a reasonable number of people to come and join our neighborhood would be lovely. But the numbers that we're talking about make absolutely no sense whatsoever. When you add the cars and you add the people and you see the impact on our schools, all of that, it makes absolutely no sense. Um, so I, I hear, I get sort of compassion from you guys on your side, but it, it doesn't constitute anything that's real in terms of what this is going to turn out to be. And that's extremely upsetting to all of us. So I just, just want you to know.
Thank you for coming out tonight, Mr. Bartolani. Uh, Mr. Lester, could you respond to the sloping issue? I don't think there's anything that was technical on the last comment that you should respond to.
Yeah, so HCD asked for some more information on the site. Um, I did use Google Earth and measured it. That is the process that I've used on other housing elements. That's been approved by HCD. I did not use the source that he was referring to. However, I included the data and the images based on what I found using Google Earth.
Um, what about the earlier comment about the density on the two parcels, whether, uh, because they are sloping, whether there was some feedback from HCD, it could be less dense than what we proposed?
Uh, I, I do not agree that that's accurate. I did not read that in the HCD comment letter. They asked for, um, a deeper analysis of constraints in the different topical areas, and we provided that. And they have since reviewed it and not had any further comments.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Valerie Slaven. You might want to lower the podium there.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Slaven. I live at nine seven eight Santa Cruz Drive here in Pleasant Hill. So I'm going to, um, I want to applaud what's going on in Sacramento actually, and Senator Weiner, um, Tim Grayson, Buffy Wicks, for pushing the issue of housing and building housing. I, I feel for you that you think control has been taken away. But for decades, local jurisdictions have not been doing their job. We wouldn't be in the crisis that we are in now. If, you know, for too many of you, you listen only to those in the community that don't want it in their part of the town. I was at that last meeting. I don't actually disagree that those two sites may not be good sites. But I heard over and over again, oh, I've got nothing against affordable housing, just not here. And it's too many people and we can't get them into school. Um, this is heard over and over and over again throughout California. It's been going on for decades. Please grow spine. We need affordable housing. We have a housing crisis and Pleasant Hill can do its part. I would love to have housing, multi-density housing near where I live. I live near the Sun Valley Mall. There's a huge underutilized parking lot. I look at that and it, it makes me angry of what we could do. So please have courage, do what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Levin. Uh, the next speaker is Maria Bangard.
Hi, um, I just wanted to express my frustration with this whole process. Um, I hear what everyone's saying and I agree with everyone and I, I think that there are so many issues here. I feel like the state doesn't know our city. We know our city. You spent two years working on a housing element that included the JCPenney site, which I believe she's referring to there. We all agree that's a fantastic site. It's near DVC, which is a community college. Um, we went, we spent taxpayer money to build the DVC transit hub, which was, you know, I read the, the promo on that was like, it's one of two of Contra Costa's main major transportation hubs. And it was going to be like the Center for Transportation. We were going to build high-density housing near it because that makes environmental sense. I'm an environmentalist. I mean, we, we have an environmental crisis as well as a housing crisis. So I do not understand. I agree with what Sue was saying about the competing things from the state. You know, there are definitely environment, environmental issues that are, this is diametrically opposed to them. It makes no sense. You know, you're putting it on these sites where there's no public transportation. There, you know, there, it's a narrow little road. There are places in the city that make way more sense. We all want more affordable housing. We just want where it makes sense for Pleasant Hill. And we don't want the state to tell us because the state doesn't know our city. We know our city. I doubt they've ever even come and looked at those sites to see how impractical they are. And they are very sloped. Every time I drive past that Paso Gal Hill on the way home, I think to myself, what developer in their right mind would attempt to put a hundred units there? It's just, it's very impractical. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Joanne Dirkle. Turkey, excuse me.
Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for all your hard work. Um, I just, I have a lot I want to say. I'll say some for a letter because I'm trying to be more succinct for this, but, um, I just want to encourage you to really listen. I agree with most of the comments that were made already, so I won't want to repeat any of that. Um, you know, one of the, um, job requirements for being an elected official is humility, right? You've all experienced that. And, um, you know, I think we can all acknowledge that the process has been fraught with bumps along the way. I mentioned, I talked about that publicly the last time. Um, you have an opportunity to, you know, keep trying to improve that by, and part of that is listening to people's frustrations in terms of the communication or lack thereof. I know you're under tremendous pressure. We've heard that loud and clear all, every time you talk about it. Um, but I just think, you know, take this opportunity to listen to people like, you know, Matt Kennedy, who has devoted hours and hours of his time doing research. Don't just dismiss the facts that he's coming up with. Um, you know, we rely, I know heavily on experts because you can't be an expert in everything, but I think, um, and I think you really, this is a really critical, uh, thing and, and it's not been the best process. And so to, you know, look at the data that he's looking at, question your experts and, and, you know, take the time to drill down. I was a little surprised at the structure of his study session because you, I mean, just my own personal experience is it, you know, it's mainly the council discussing and, you know, grappling with issues. And so I don't know why that process is a little different here, but, um, if you're all already know the answers or if you're, I don't know, but I would just, you know, that's a healthy thing for the public to see as well, to understand. So, and just one last, um, thought. I appreciate everything you're saying, all the connections you're making. That's fabulous. I was really happy to hear that. I don't know if the city council itself is putting forward these messages to the state as a, as a council. Um, I know everybody, you know, is grappling. And one thing I know, don't dismiss this as pie in the sky, just really think about it. But, um, you know, I've worked, my whole career was working with families, adults and families, um, who are struggling to achieve economic self-sufficiency. This idea of high-density affordable housing to me is absolutely atrocious. It does not serve these folks well because you're automatically stigmatizing in a high, you know, a high resource area. You're stigmatizing this building, especially with children. It breaks my heart. You know, kids coming home from school. It's like, that's that building. You know, they know that. It's, it's sad. There's so many better ways to do this. I'm all in favor of giving people the opportunities by living in high resources. I agree with that a hundred percent, but I don't think high density serves them well. And so question that. We know the state has this idea. We know some of the entities that are benefiting from this, you know, financially. Um, they're not caring about affordable housing for people. They're caring about their money. So question those kinds of things and please advocate on our behalf with the state to move away from those kinds of ideas. And I realize that's probably not possible at this point, but I think it needs to be said. You're not serving people who can benefit from affordable housing by putting them in high-density buildings that look so different and stand out, um, create smaller opportunities for them to really, um, enjoy the community. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Turkey. I, I don't have any other speaker cards for anyone in chambers. Is there anyone here in chambers who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll turn to, uh, do we have any Zoom callers?
Yes, we have four hands raised. Um, Max Davis.
Hello, can you hear me? Yeah. Um, hi, my name's Matt. Thanks. Hi, my name's Max Davis. I'm a member of East Bay for everyone. Um, and thank you all for having me today. Uh, sorry about all those callers at the very beginning. That's really, I've heard that's going around different cities and that's really sad. Um, I wanted to talk, uh, addressing, I guess, a lot of what's been talked about here, um, the sites, the Paso Gal and the Morela site. Um, I went to the meeting a few months ago and I, I always think it's funny. I hear a lot of, uh, real local residents talking about how bad these sites are, how they, they're so far from transit, they're far from services, all these things. Uh, but the housing in that neighborhood costs almost a million dollars. Um, so clearly a lot of people want to live there. They want to live in those areas and those are, you know, nice places to live. I think, you know, almost all of us would agree. Um, so I think lower income people deserve to be able to live in those neighborhoods too. Um, and what we're talking about here is we're, we're not talking about the city like forcing residents to live there or something. We're just talking about, uh, Pleasant Hill allowing people to live in those communities, since right now, uh, lower income people are effectively excluded from the vast majority of the city. Uh, because it's illegal to build higher-density housing. Um, and I agree, I think partially with a lot of the, the speakers who talk about like concentrating housing on these specific sites. Um, I think it would be much better if the city did something like allowing townhouses to be built throughout the entire city and then developers could, really could pick what are the best sites for townhouses. And then residents, lower-income residents could pick what neighborhood do they want to live in? Uh, because right now, lower-income residents are effectively excluded. Uh, so it is a really great opportunity, this housing element process. Um, and the state, you know, this is something that the state requires because if the state didn't require it, I don't think the city would be doing it. They, you, we wouldn't be here looking at these sites and trying to find, uh, more capacity for low, lower-income housing. Um, and that's, that's how we got into this whole housing crisis. That's why, um, you know, younger residents in middle school or high school today probably won't be able to live in Pleasant Hill in the future because it's so expensive to live here. Um, so yeah, I think this is a really big opportunity for the future of the city, for the future of the residents. To allow people to, to live throughout the community and to, to get rid of the exclusionary zoning that has, has plagued our communities and created this, all of this economic segregation that we see. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, next, next Zoom caller.
Marshall Lewis.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello, Mr. Lewis.
Hello. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I didn't realize that the, we were going to be having this public hearing today. Um, but I am glad that I was here and I had the chance to look through the revised housing element a little bit. And I liked all of the changes that I saw. I think there's been a lot of progress that's been made. I like that we're now actually taking credit for the zoning for the Mangini property. I like the changes to, um, making sure that the two hillside sites are not subject to mandatory HBUD rezoning. Uh, because that could have been a significant monkey wrench in things. Um, I am also going to be submitting a written letter once I've had the chance to look at things in a little bit more detail. On a broader, more conceptual level though, I wanted to talk a little bit about housing mobility because Sue had had a question about that earlier. And it's also sort of touched on some of the things that other people have mentioned. Housing mobility isn't just when a low-income person, uh, moves into a higher resource area and then they have better opportunities there. Housing mobility is also people going through different stages of their life. Because as we go through different stages of our lives, the needs that we have for housing change. So I grew up in Pleasant Hill. I attended Gregory Gardens Elementary, graduated from DVC, lived in a single-family home with my parents then. But once I graduated, once I was out on my own, I, you know, it, it wasn't reasonable for me to get a single-family home for myself. Instead, I, what matched my needs then was a studio apartment. And then, uh, you know, a little while later, my wife, we were living in a condo. Now we're getting ready to start a family. Now we live in a single-family home again. And so, and for a lot of that time also, I had the same job. It wasn't like I was, you know, like really going up in the world, going down or anything like that. I was just going through my life. But I had to leave Pleasant Hill for part of that because Pleasant Hill during that Rena cycle had constructed zero units of affordable housing and there was just nothing that was available. So I hope that we think about the diversity of our housing stock while we're making these decisions. And in particular, for the Mangini site, I know that, I think that the density that's in there right now is just what was in the land use plan. I hope that we do increase that some, make sure that it's within the Mullen densities so that affordable housing is feasible to be constructed there. Um, not necessarily for compliance, but just because it would be a very good thing to do because there's a need for more diverse kinds of housing. And that will really benefit the, the residents of our city, including my, my future child. Um, so thank you, everybody, for working on this and I'll submit a written comment later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next Zoom caller.
Jack Prosec.
Mr. Prosec.
Mr. Prosec, it's your turn to speak.
Yes, I'm sorry. It took me a moment to, yeah, click on the button there. Uh, it's Jack Prosec, longtime resident of Pleasant Hill. I'd like to address tonight's presentation during which the consultant, Ryan, repeatedly slipped into saying committed the city to over and over and over again. And these commitments were oftentimes financial, either direct finding funding, which is, there's no surplus in the general, general budget or waiving fees, doing things like that. Um, that is also that cost has to be paid for somewhere. So whether, whether you hand out the money or whether you, whether you, uh, uh, waive fees, it's still a, a cost that needs to be paid for uh, out of the city budget. And, uh, I'd really like to hear the city attorney wave in, weigh in on whether these changes that the consultant is proposing to make fall within the authority that was given to the city staff and consultant at your, in your approval on May eighteenth, because I believe it far exceeds, uh, that authority. And that this matter should come back to the council for approval before it's resubmitted. Uh, I heard nothing to that effect. Just that they were going to post it for seven days for public comment. And then do what they wanted to do and submit it. Uh, weighing in on some of the other comments that were made this evening, uh, you know, uh, including, uh, council member Noak's, uh, uh, questioning about some of these overlapping, uh, requirements. Yeah, it's, this is the most classic case we have of too much government. It's, it's just gone crazy and, uh, uh, even HCD is tripping over their feet trying to enforce all of the stupid regulations that our state legislator have passed and the governor has signed. So, um, I'm not going to go into the details of my, of my email comments, uh, submitted in writing, uh, here this evening, but, uh, those are also there for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prosek. Do we have another Zoom caller?
Yes, Mark L.
Yeah, hi, this is Lubiszewski. And my, my question is for Mr. Lester. In his presentation, he referred several times to, uh, if I heard correctly, informal talks, informal agreements, informal understandings. And my, my question is, what, why were we not able to have HCD give us a formal and binding understanding of what the city council is responsible for so that they can make informed decisions and not have someone else at HCD or perhaps an advocacy group come in and challenge that informal understanding and we're back to square two. That's all.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lubiszewski. Are there any of the Zoom callers?
There are no hands raised. No more hands raised.
Okay. Uh, turning back to the chambers, anyone here in chambers wish to offer public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at this time and bring it back to council. Just to address Mr. Lubiszewski's comments and certainly invite city staff or, uh, Mr. Lester to, to weigh in. Um, the city decided that it was prudent to, uh, I'll say float the response and get sort of pre-approval because we didn't, because of the delays in submissions and, and return. Um, that wanted to make sure that we were all understanding each other and the reviewers have changed over the course of our submissions since the beginning. And depending on the reviewer, the comments change as well. So it's, it's much of a moving target often. Uh, and so I thought it was very prudent, uh, for staff and our consultants to um, have informal discussions with our HCD reviewer. Uh, getting specific clarification on what exactly HCD was looking for to approve our element. Uh, and then getting their July 31 letter. Uh, and crafting our proposed responses and then running them by HCD first. Uh, and before, uh, submitting them. I think it would have been, um, inopportune if we had done that and then found that there were some misunderstandings or our proposal didn't complete and it just came back again for for further clarification. So I applaud the staff and consultant for, uh, seeking out that informal conversation. Um, in terms of, uh, Mr. Prosek's comment that he thinks staff exceeded their authority. Uh, if, if I thought so, we would have said so. Um, this is stylized as a study session, but it really is staff's report back to the community and to council on the refinement to the housing element that the council approved last May. We did discuss and amongst all of us exhaustively the pros and cons of, of what HCD seemed to be requiring us of us in terms of our designation of the properties. Um, and the comments that I made at that time stand today. Well, you know, my, I fully shared what I thought about HCD's requirements. Uh, and, but at the same time, having the housing element approved is paramount. Uh, and so the staff reported back to us on the refinements HCD wanted and it was within their authority to uh, negotiate or preview or do anything and come back to council to report to us. And they're seeking direction from us tonight. They want us to, I don't think they needed to. Uh, but the staff, uh, is seeking further approval of council on the further refinements. So, and, and while it may have been difficult to follow, hopefully it took time to read the staff report, uh, which I thought made it more understandable and the actual housing element modifications. Uh, about, uh, uh, very technical. Uh, they call it programs. It's just a matter of um, offering reaffirmance or reassurances to HCD that the city is going to, uh, uh, go in a particular direction to, um, as they say, remove the constraints to development and not just low, low income. It's all housing. Uh, which I don't think anybody on council disagrees with. I mean, since I've been on councils even before, I've been a housing promoter. I have, and I'm not aware of any housing proposal being turned away at the door here in Pleasant Hill. This has been, always been a friendly uh, environment. We promote housing. We had, this council's approved a number of developments that you've seen. They're, uh, they're here. They've been sold out. A very newly sold out. Uh, so I think that we've done what we could. Um, the idea of low-income housing is more complicated because the city is not the developer. We have no funds to develop property. We have no funds to develop housing. Uh, and so that, and the state, at least I think recognizes that at some level. Uh, and just is requiring that we remove anything that could be perceived as a barrier to somebody who wishing to build low-income housing has the opportunity to do so. But it's all very much driven by the private market and what a developer is willing to do. The developer is going to make the determination whether parcel is appropriate, whether it's buildable, whether it's slope is not, i- i- is, is too, um, uh, difficult to, to do. But I, I know in the passing of all properties, when I was on the planning commission, there was a couple of proposals to develop that lot. So it's developable. Whether it's developable economically for low-income housing or high-density, I, I don't know. That's really for the, the private sector to, to come to us and tell us that they have, you know, an interest in acquiring the property. They have an interest in developing it. And then we do what we can to make sure that development, uh, fits as well as it can in, in the existing surrounding property. Uh, but so my comments on, on some of the public comment, I agree. City council meetings are very, you know, stunted. It, it, if I was on your side of the day, I probably feel half the time I'm not being heard because you get to make your comment and I do listen to it. But I have to decide whether I agree or disagree, or whether I have the ability to even change anything to, um, give you the, the relief you seek. But today, as I said, it's a study session, just sort of, I'll call it wordsmithing our housing element. It's really not changing the core of the housing element that we had really heated discussions about back in May. That hasn't changed. It's just the, I'll call it the fluff around it. Uh, the, the sort of the programs and no offense to, to Mr. Lester. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, it's a tough job, but it, the, the, the hard decisions were already made when we submitted our, our housing element earlier. And now we're just making sure that we are going to get the approval that we need so we can move forward. We can finish our general plan. Uh, and we can also do the zoning requirements that we need to. But I'm sure others have, uh, comments. Councilman Noak?
Um, yeah, I'll start off by, uh, one, um, uh, Bruce, uh, who I've had several conversations with over the last couple of years on the general plan and, and housing issues. Uh, and, and I welcome those with, with anybody. Um, reminded me to let everybody know that the public comment period is open for Plan Bay Area 2050, which is what really, uh, is focusing on this housing need in Pleasant Hill. So feel free to go on to Plan Bay Area 2050 for their update and, um, and make your public comments there because that is driving a lot of the housing and, um, and, and what's being, um, what's being looked at for need of housing in, in the Bay Area. Um, I think, you know, and I'm going to say this and everybody's going to say, well, that's really nice. You know, people said you've got compassion but not doing anything. We have, the decision we have is to get our housing element certified or to get sued or lose control of all our permitting and get sued for millions potentially. So that's what our position is right now. And HCD said, pick two parcels in the high-resource areas away from the highway, away from Contra Costa Boulevard and find two vacant lots or find vacant lots that had certain requirements in order to put multifamily housing on. There are only two lots in those areas in Pleasant Hill. And it happens to be Paso Nogal and Morello. If we remove them, we are at risk of not having our housing element certified, losing all control over our housing and permitting and getting sued. And this is the, this is the decision process every city in this entire state is dealing with. It's not just Pleasant Hill. Walnut Creek's dealing with it. Clayton's dealing with, Concord's dealing with, everybody's dealing with the same issue across the state. Southern California had to deal with it last year. This is our year. So this, it, we're not unique in this. Every city is dealing with this. And when we have to make this decision, we've got to look at balancing that decision. Do we say, no, we're not going to build there? We're not building, we're zoning. I think Mayor, um, Flaherty pointed out appropriately, a developer is going to come in and say, can I put, build affordable housing on one of these sites? Or is it going to cost so much that I'm not going to be able to produce affordable housing? And if they come up to that decision, they won't build on that site. Maybe they'll look at the DVC site and say, that's the site I can actually afford to build affordable housing on. And so they'll build it there. Or maybe they'll build it in a location somewhere else in the city, the JCPenney site. We're not precluding that from happening there. It's just not in our housing opportunity site. A developer could come in and say, I can take that building and make affordable housing in it. And that may make a whole lot more sense for a developer than building on Paso Nogal and Morello. It's just not what HCD is requiring or allowing. And so I, I want everybody to understand that. Uh, developers will come in and they will make an assessment of where they can build affordable housing. Can they get funding? Because most affordable housing cannot be built without subsidies of some sort. It costs $650,000 minimum to build a unit of affordable housing. At $650,000, that's the cost. $650,000, that's not affordable for anybody. So it requires subsidies. And that requires grant processes and things like that. Not easy to do, not easy to get. So there are a lot more challenges than people realize than us saying zoning any of these sites for that and things are going to get built tomorrow. The site down in Cleveland, further south, the flood plain has been on our housing element, I don't know, three, four times. It's never been built on. Because there's some challenges that make it not work. It's been on there, it's never been built. Mangini has been on there for, I don't know, 12, 15 years and it's never been built on. So I don't also want people to panic and think the moment this zoning gets approved, there's going to be building tomorrow. There's a lot of factors that go into that. And there is some discretion, but for us, it's really important to getting housing element certified because we cannot risk the city's financial position to get sued or have the state come in and take our permitting process away. And they'll come in and permit whatever they want to, anywhere they want to. The other point I, I do want to make, and this came up briefly in the discussion, our general plan actually rezones a lot of, a lot of areas around Pleasant Hill, around the neighborhood. Um, uh, areas for mixed use. We're hoping some of that happens and will count to Rena. It's not in our housing opportunity sites, but the rezoning may allow for retail units with two apartments above to be built. Things like that. We're hoping that those changes in the general plan will allow for other units to be built within Pleasant Hill that can count toward Rena that we can include in our housing opportunity sites. So I think people have to look at the total of this. Um, you know, some people have been involved for, I've been on the general plan advisory committee since, I don't know what, 2018, working through this. And it's ju, you know, we are doing the best we can to get where we are and protect the entire city. And that's, has to be our goal. That's it for my comments.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Vincent?
I can't really add much to what's been said by Mayor Flaherty and Councilmember Noak, but I, I do, for one thing, I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Noak's persistence. She's dealing with, uh, Senator Grayson and, uh, our congressman to see if we can get some of these changed. It is very frustrating sitting up here trying to make decisions when you've got two different organizations that have conflicting desires or goals. Uh, the meeting tonight, as I understood it, is we made our hard decisions uh, several months ago. Several of you spent probably five or six hours with us that evening. Uh, tonight was really to address some specific issues raised about a proposal that HCD raised. I think a lot of the changes were just moving language from one area to another in the report. Uh, we weren't really, uh, here tonight to look at an alternative site to Paso Nogal and, uh, Morello, but I didn't hear one suggested that HCD would approve anyway. So, um, I defer to my colleagues because I think they've covered everything that needs to be said.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm sure you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, obviously I, I think that the comments of, of, uh, Mayor Flaherty and, and Councilmembers Noak and Vincent, um, I, I don't really have a whole lot of brilliant, uh, things to add to that. But I will say this. Um, if I, if, if, if I didn't, or, and I won't speak for my colleagues, but for me personally, if, if, if I didn't listen to the comments that everybody has made about this over the course of several months, this would be a really easy decision to make. I mean, we got to have a housing element. I voted, get it in, let's get going. Um, but what makes it difficult is that people are passionate and they make really good arguments on both sides of, of this. Um, there are people that are, you know, don't want things built and there are people that are advocates of, of housing and, and feel like we need to build way more than we already are. Uh, and so I, I just wanted to, um, you know, I think, like I said, they offered some very, some really good comments about this. Uh, but what I just want you to come across tonight is that, um, it makes it very difficult to move forward on these things when we hear the, the, the passion that you all have and understanding, i- i- it's, it's, it's not easy, but we, this is what we need to do. Uh, we do, you know, we do not need to, um, hang this up any longer and risk some really serious, uh, issues that could arise. And so, um, I, I just wanted to let you know, uh, from my perspective, and I believe from the, I, and I believe from my colleagues as well, as I, I know them. You know, we, we, we do hear you and, 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 and I, I, I just want to make sure that you all knew that tonight here in the chamber and online. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Rinn.
Yeah, just, um, I think there's a consensus amongst the council, um, which I appreciate the different perspectives and, uh, what, but at the end of the day, understanding what we have to accomplish. Um, you know, I just want to acknowledge Councilmember Noak too, from 2018 to through COVID and all the virtual town halls and all the things that built up to the whole plan. And um, then we had, uh, you know, now Supervisor Carlson, uh, along with you. And I don't know the numbers of how many of those meetings were and how many there were. And many of you that attended those are here tonight. Um, and it was a very well thought-out plan, given the rules that were given. Um, you know, we may not fully, some of the rules that the state and HCD is putting down on us don't make total sense. Um, and we're trying to, to play within those guidelines and, and us as a council, um, we look at the whole city as a whole and try to keep out of litigation and do the best thing for the city as a whole. And having this plan completed is a big accomplishment to help uh, the city and do that. Um, it, it's been a long process for a lot of people and there's a lot of emotions uh, about this, but I, I, I think if you guys can take away, uh, Councilmembers Noak's comments about if you really take a step back and look at the bigger picture of if lower-income housing were to go into those two projects, the feasibility of those actually to come for fruition for a builder to come in would have to need a lot of grant funding uh, to do that because it's very expensive to do, especially on projects. So, you know, a lot of you brought forward some of the site constraints, um, which will only add even more money to a project of that nature. Um, so you know, I feel comfortable. I know there's still passionate feelings about that. But I, I still feel comfortable moving forward with plan uh, with what we got and what we know at this time.
So as I understand it, there's no resolution tonight. It's, does anyone have any specific feedback or changes to the proposed response? I haven't heard any from council.
No, I just, I just want to say I really appreciate, as you, as you pointed out, Mayor Flaherty, you know, the informal communication. I know HCD was not willing to do that the first two rounds, sadly. Maybe this week could have cut this shorter a long time ago. But I do appreciate the fact that we were finally able to get those informal discussions and, uh, and get some clarity because obviously seemingly the, the lines and the rules seem to change on a daily basis with HCD. So I appreciate the efforts and the work and at least that informal process. We have a little bit more clarity in what's going to happen. So, thank you.
Does staff need anything further from council at this point? We do not. Uh, thank you all for coming out. We do not. Uh, thank you all for coming out tonight on this item. Stick around, we have one more item. Uh, it's on ethics. It's and and so we'll move to ten point three, adopt a resolution on a city policy regarding the receipt and distribution of tickets and our passes and furtherance of the city's reasonably defined public purposes. Our city attorney, Janet Coulson, I believe, will introduce this for us.
Yes, thank you. So this is a, um, do you want me to wait a couple of minutes or? Go ahead, I mean. You want me to go ahead?
Sure.
Okay. This is a ticket policy that uh the council uh needs to review and approve. And it's to keep us in conformance with the FPPC regulations concerning um free tickets or passes that may uh be given to the city. This was um not really something we had to be concerned about uh for most of my time here. We didn't get any tickets or passes or anything, but if you
Yeah, what tickets and passes?
I I should say this was proposed to be on the consent calendar and I did not know the substance of it. I just thought that it was an ethical consideration. I'm a fan of transparency and ethical considerations and those being discussed in public. But then when I saw the actual report, I thought, oh, maybe it could have stayed on consent, given that the subject matter, in my experience, has never come up in the city of Pleasant Hill. But go ahead.
No, it it hasn't. And and um, I think that the city manager and I were joking that the former city manager um would run in the opposite direction if anybody tried to give a free ticket or a pass. She wouldn't have accepted them for any reason whatsoever. But um recently, the um council has decided to join in with the sponsorship program from the Recreation and Park District. And that program, I think, is set up mostly for businesses or perhaps individuals to um to sponsor or get their name out there um for different events, not necessarily for a public agency. And so there are different levels of sponsorship. And with some of those levels of sponsorship come free tickets and passes. And so we haven't accepted any of those. Those haven't been used, but if um, for example, the council wished to use any of those, you need to have a ticket policy adopted that's in conformance with FPPC regulations. And if the value is over fifty dollars for a ticket, for example, um, and you get a free ticket under the the um policy here, you don't have to report that on your seven hundred form. The ca- the city reports it on an eight oh two form. And so it's not considered income to you. Now, if you buy your own tickets, that's entirely up to you. You can do that. If you volunteer and you work an event, that's entirely up to you. That's not reportable as income. But if you get a free ticket to something, um, you either have to report it on your seven hundred form, or if the city has a ticket policy and we follow that ticket policy in dispersing those tickets, then the city reports it on the eight oh two form. I know that sounds rather technical, but um, we thought it wise or prudent to have such a policy now because um of this sponsorship with Recreation and Parks, different levels. There are some tickets that simply come with our level of sponsorship. That's all I have.
Any questions of our city attorney on this item?
Nope.
Going to open public comment. Um, anybody here in the chambers wishes to comment on this item also uh through Zoom and our Zoom is meeting ID eight one eight eight one four two eight seven five one. The passcode is zero zero four one one two.
There are no hands raised.
No hands raised, going once, twice, three times, no public comment on this. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for a discussion or a motion.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Noak, a second by the Vice Mayor.
Noak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. Um, again, thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight. That's the end of our agenda. We'll adjourn to our next meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. Thank you.